Educating, informing, serving. FEC TV, keeping government honest.
It's 6 o'clock on February 17th. Select Board meeting here at the Town Garage.
Hey guys.
We need a... Welcome everybody. We need a... Kathy is, I understand, is not... It's under the weather so she will not be here today. I'm half under the weather, Bill is half. I think we all got a cold, whatever we got from Bill, but anyway. We're all here. We need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any votes? All right. You need to approve the minutes of February 3rd.
Do you want corrections before or after?
No, not right now. Any additions or corrections?
In the first list of attendance, Kim Reckert should be in there.
Okay.
Back page four. Hopefully Jack Byron.
Where is that now?
Page four.
You have a number?
Up at the top, on your school commission.
Okay, all right. There, I see. Okay, yep.
It's funny, it's capitalized.
It's comm... Why is it capitalized? Why is it capitalized?
All right. Now, I've only got... I've got one question. On the front page under four, second bullet, third line down, there was a overweight or a certificate of insurance would be forthcoming. Is it? Has it?
Yeah.
I don't issue... I don't sign them until they're there. But I... Otherwise, we're delayed a whole other two weeks, so if you approve them, subject two, then I'll approve them when it comes in and it did.
Okay.
Are there any other additions or corrections of the minutes as presented?
Make motion, read adopt the minutes, would those identify?
Second.
Second, Chris? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Votes? Okay. Motion, minutes have been approved. So, the warrants have been signed and approved by the board, so that's... They're okay for the last audit or less than period. So that's done. So now we have Fred Duplessis, who's going to talk about the order that we just had a few months back.
Thank you. So I see some of the great copies out there of the boundary report. This is the first year in the transition to modified cash basis accounting, which hopefully simplifies the accounting at the town office. Doesn't make a huge difference in terms of where you end up, but eliminates a lot of the complexity that a lot of towns have had dealing with all the changes in accounting and more changes to come. And so we've had a lot of towns over the years switch to modified accrual, and this is the first one under that basis of accounting. So when you look at our opinions, the... We've give a clean, unmodified opinion for the general fund and the capital projects fund. The only qualification we have is in the trustee of public funds and the library fund. One of the quirks of the cash basis is that investments are supposed to be kept on the books at cost. Well, some of these have been around for quite a while, and at this point, they're at market value rather than a cost. The theory being that until you sell something, it's... The market value can fluctuate. Until you sell it, you really don't know what you have. And so... But it's at market value now. There's two ways to correct that. One would be to go back and research what the original cost was of some of these investments when they were first given or donated. The second would be to simply sell them and revive them. That reestablishes cost, and then you simply would have to track it from that point forward. It also makes sure that what the value is, is really the value because you get it, and then however you choose to reinvest, you can. So that's a quirk, but other than that, it's a clean opinion on everything. The basic credentials haven't changed how they look. There's a very combined statement in the beginning that combines all your funds together. I kind of rather look at the individual funds, so on exhibit C on page six, you get your general fund, your capital projects fund, your library fund, and your trustee of public funds fund. All of those are maintained separately within your accounting system. The total fund balance in the general fund at the end of the year was about $478,000. Some of that money is restricted for various purposes. There's other that has been assigned by the board for either return to the taxpayers or for specific items, leaving an unassigned fund balance of about $163,000. So that's about 14 and a half percent of annual budgeted expenditures. Your first tax levy doesn't come in until August 15th. That's the first due date for taxes, so you're running about 46 days, 12 and a half percent. So it lines up pretty well. You're in good shape in terms of having money there to get you through from a cash flow standpoint in the general fund. It also leaves you a little bit extra if the board and the taxpayers want to use some of that to offset when there's emergencies or unexpected expenses, or to simply keep the tax rate in line. So having a reasonable fund balance is important for cash flow. It's also important to be able to manage that tax rate so that there's no spikes. If you have health insurance, oil, whatever, a bad winter with road salt or whatever, it means you've got some money in the bank that then the next year, maybe even the year after, you can keep those rates smooth rather than having to have them fluctuate. Where I've seen in other towns that don't have a decent fund balance to carry forward, two things happen. They get spikes in their rates, and they have to borrow in order to keep their cash flow going in anticipation of taxes. So you ended up the year in good shape. In terms of your budget actual, which starts on page eight and runs for seven pages, this is the budget that was passed by the select board and then approved by the voters. In terms of receipts, on page nine, you took in about $51,000 more than was budgeted, and it's in various categories. A lot of it's grants that have come in. And in terms of spending, on page 14, you spent about $64,000 less than was planned. And again, and that's in different areas. Some places you went over, some places you went under. But in total, between those two, the plan was to have a break even year, to spend exactly what you take in. Because you did a little better on revenue and a little better on expenses, you actually did $115,000 to the good, which increased your fund balance from a year ago to the number we saw on the balance sheet. There are financial statements on what are called private purpose trust funds. Those are funds where you are the fiduciary, you're responsible for keeping track of all those funds. It's things like the S.B. Jones Library, the Grafton, the Campbell Fund, the Wolfson Fund. And there's a schedule in pages 34 and 35 that show each of those funds. So they're all tracked separately, but shown in total. The going forward, there are a lot of footnotes, starting on page 17, that explain the basic accounting, what you are, how you're governed, what your tax rate is, what debt you have, just a lot of information in there. We talked about those fund balances and what they're assigned or restricted for, and there's a list of that on page 25 and 26. There's a big footnote on the fact that you participate in the Vermont municipal employee retirement system. I know there's been a lot of talk that the... Some of the retirement systems in the state, particularly the teachers and the state employees, is really underfunded. It's not quite as true for Veevers. It is actually one of the better funded plans, certainly in the state and actually in the country. And so your share of that at this point is about $100,000. But based on what the actuaries say, that with the current rate structure in place, there will be plenty of money flowing into that to pay all the mist of employees for as far out as they can see. And so the Veevers plan is well-funded, not true of the teachers' plan, not true of the state employees' plan. And we're going to see a lot of our tax dollars, unfortunately, at the state level, being eaten up by trying to get that... Those two plans back in line. And I know that they're talking about virtually any new revenue that's coming in is going to have to go to that because those are promises that were made to both the teachers and the employees that they need to deal with. We can't leave that for the future generations to have to deal with. But unfortunately, that's happened. Not true with Veevers. There's some schedules in the back. Finally, because this is an audit done in accordance with government auditing standards, we also have to have a report on compliance with laws and regulations and internal control. There were no compliance issues. We do have two recommendations. They really kind of go... They're similar. There were some fund balance entries. What's that means is that they were posting some items directly to fund balance, which means the revenues and expenses didn't show up. And they corrected that, and so both of those are dealt with. They both really relate to the same thing. The... In the back, we include a letter from the town explaining their reaction to those findings. So basically, we have the report, the findings, and then the resolution by the town. We're comfortable that that will address those issues. I don't know if there's any questions on the main body of the audit report or any items we've talked about?
Do you have any... The board have any comments or questions? Yes.
Were you still okay? I know you still have some concerns, both you and Stan, about the posting towards the expenditure versus what comes in in grants and the revenues. You okay with that, my explanation? You know, we've gone over multiple times. I know they don't like seeing... Not seeing the revenue offset expenses.
Unless you have an accounting brain, I think it just doesn't... It doesn't make sense, at least.
No, it doesn't make sense to me. In terms of the fact that they're netted.
Yeah.
And they don't come back to where... In my points, they don't come back to where they originally belong, actually.
Right. The problem is, is then you don't see them though. So those revenue expenses never show up anywhere. It's like they never existed. And so that's what the accounting says. Now, from your budget standpoint, if you don't like seeing them in the budget, we can show that differently. We can show your budget actual without those in there and show reconciliation at the bottom. So if there are some major grants running through the general fund that you feel are distorting your budget, we can deal with that. So we can show you how to... It will still tie out, but it won't show against the budget line item. So if the board decides that that's really what's confusing it, then that can be fixed as well, under the current system.
That would help me, I think.
Yeah.
I think that's... That would be a good recommendation because then... It's very confusing, and it's very confusing for the residents when they look at the town report. They... Because you don't see that this expense was offset by...
You look like you overspent.
We actually overspent, but we really didn't.
Because you had grant money to offset.
Because we had grant money to overcome that expenditure, but it doesn't...
Yeah. And we could show that as a reconciling item. If that's an unbudgeted expense, it will still have to be in there, but at the bottom of the page so that you don't see that up in the budget expenses.
Cynthia?
So if the... You know, the grant goes into your revenue, so you've got more revenue to offset the more expenses. So you're saying you would show the revenue, but you would take it out of the...
It just would be shown at the bottom.
At the bottom. What about the expense?
Same thing. You'd move that too. You couldn't keep... You couldn't show one without the other. You'd have to...
No, you gotta show both. Makes sense.
Right. And we've got towns that do that. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, you still see it. It'll still show up. It just will not be reflected because it wasn't planned for in the budget. So it...
In a way, it is planned for because they know they're going to get some grants.
Right, but they may not know how many. I mean, the budget is supposed to be a tool, and if it's not... If it's not being a tool for the board to manage or for the administrator to help manage the... Then it's got to be useful. And so the idea being that if, in spite of it having to be shown up, if it's more helpful to have it be shown separate, it can be done.
Yeah, it should be shown.
But it does have to be shown. You're right. Yes. It should be shown. Yeah.
Do we have any other questions, or Fred? Cynthia, are you... I mean, Kim, are you okay? Do you have anything you want to...
Yeah. I have a direct line for Brad. I mean, you...
Yeah, I mean, the transition was a little... But I think, you know, we've got through it, and I think now it should be going on a regular basis, so.
Okay.
Good.
Appreciate you coming down here.
Thank you, Fred.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll look forward to seeing you next year.
Yeah.
Okay, the highway. You want to do the roads in Otis? Do you want to do it as listed on here? Is that okay with everybody? So it's the first item, Danny, is the roads in the area of Otis Road. So Bill, you want to...
Yeah. There is a couple sheets. I don't know what happened to them. I gave you a sheet that is really short that is called Discussion of Roads Near Otis Road. This one. Okay? And what it does... This is what it says on here, so I'll just read the whole thing, then we'll go through it. Decisions to be made. Keep all three roads or keep some of the roads? Which to keep? Will the two roads, if kept, that go from Hall Ranch down to Otis Road become one road in name? Put one or any road back on the map. Put back on the map as Class 4 or legal trail. If legal trail, a hearing would be required at which budding landowners would have a sit. In addition to that, I'm checking with E-Trans. There isn't any provision in the law... Excuse me a second. I can find no provision in the law for our situation where roads haven't been on the map, but they're there, and they've never been discontinued. So the question is, why aren't they on the map? And I was hoping that we could just show them that they should be on the map that never been discontinued, if you decide to put them on the map. That they were never discontinued, and they should be there, and here's where they are. And we can give them a much better map than the map that I handed out to you. Oh. What happened?
That's the reason.
Well, I had it plugged in. Okay. And so we may have to go through hearings in any case, no matter what you do on it. If you put it back on as a Class 4, it has to meet our highway standards, and I gave you the highway standards there. And if you go to the very last page of the highway standards, or next to the last page, there's one line about Class 4 roads. And it says, if they are washed out, you've got to fix them. And what's the other part?
Disconnection.
Oh, and that you can use water bars and...
Bright base dips.
And gullies instead of culverts if they were. Okay, that's part of the standard. But unlike what it used to be, where we didn't fix Class 4 roads, if these get washed out, if you put it back as a Class 4, they're your responsibility. The other thing is, before you even get into discussion of that, I talked to Danny about the very beginning of Otis Road... I mean, the beginning of the road right off of Otis. Mr. Ellsworth told me... Josh told me that there's a culvert there that may... Will probably need repairing, and Danny thinks it might be a little bit large. So in part of your decision, you've got to remember that if you do it, put it back on the map. If you do decide to put the road back on, if you do put it back on the map as Class 4, it will have to be repaired. And I think that's about it. The main reason again, that when this started was, there was concern by VAS because they use that as their VAS trail, that they would lose public access... I mean, their VAS access through that area if they didn't... Well, they were worried about losing their access. And isn't that a public road anyway? Our records show it is a public road. So it... They shouldn't lose their access because it should be back on the map. The other thing I wanted to say is if you make it a Class 4 road, you can restrict it. And you can restrict it... First of all, we don't have any regulation with regard to use of the four-wheelers on the ATVs on our roads. So they're not supposed to be on there. But if you're going to have a... Not supposed to be on there in any case. But you can make it really clear that on every other Class 4 road, they're not allowed, but on this road, they're allowed at certain times, or nowhere are they allowed. And as far as this road goes, for... You can keep it pristine when we ever have snow. For the VAS, by saying in the winter, from this state to this state, it will only be used by snowmobiles and only when there's snow on the road, when it's properly grown. So you can restrict the use of it. I think that's pretty much all. And that's all the law I gave you is in there, so that you understand that. So if you put it back on, you can restrict the use on it.
If it's Class 4, what if it becomes a trail?
A trail, they're not...
No regulations.
There's no... Well, as far as the... As snowmobiles, they would probably be able to use it, but you're not supposed to take any wheel gear though. And then you need to think of a name, maybe the Alsands Highway or something. So... There's quite a few people here who would like to speak on that. So I think you probably... However you want to start, Mr. Chairman, I'd hear from them first, but those are the issues. Are we going to keep any of them? Can hit so which ones. Are they... You want them back on the map? And then what the... What you're going to put them back on is.
You know, I'd like to hear from the landowners or from the audience on what they... How they hear.
I'll speak. I'm really here to be informed because this is kind of a new issue for me. But on what I've heard so far, I like the legal trail better than the Class 4 road.
I guess as one of... As a landowner who has land that roads three, two, and one run... At least part of it runs through. I mean, I think that the issue has been, there's been a lot of issue with degradation of the road, and I've spent a lot trying to get it back in shape, and so the... Something, you know... I was surprised because I didn't see it on the 2015 map, so this is all... It surprised me, but if it is a town road or a town trail, the conditions are really... From a management of it is really important because it's been... There's been a lot of rutting, and people don't stay on the... You know, they don't... With ATVs, they go off a trail on the land. It's very hard to keep them off. So the idea of, you know, something during wintertime, which causes a lot less damage, is really preferable. You know, the trail with that, those conditions is preferable.
I just want to... One other thing. Josh, talk about that first culvert.
Oh, just the first culvert, it's old. I mean, you know, it's basically dried stone up, and then two pieces... Two or three pieces of big granite laid over, or, you know, and it's basically been collapsing. I mean, I've been paying attention to it for 20 years because that's, you know, when I built my camp up there, and I've been babying it and are very careful when there's logging and stuff like that. But it's slowly, it's going, you know, it's just... It's starting to collapse. So it's, you know, it's probably, you know, it's... It's about probably a three feet wide and probably four feet... It was four or five feet high, but now it's collapsed down... Collapsed down in. And it's that whole brook that comes down that goes through there. It made it through Irene, but that's because it got so filled up quickly that actually all the water just started running over the top, and I had put landscape fabric down so that held it together. But it's... I have to keep repairing it with the drywall.
Is this culvert on existing road or the proposed roads that we're talking about now?
It's when you come off of Otis Road and you go down off of Otis Road onto... So be within the first 50 feet of what it says, three, off of Otis Road. That's where that is.
Have you looked at that, Danny?
No, but they're all steel culverts above that. It's a good-sized culvert. It could... The state could recommend that be a box culvert.
On a Class 4 road? On a Class 4 road?
They do it by the hydraulic studies, so.
Really?
And if they're fishing it, that's the number one thing, that you go over the bottom.
So when did those other culverts go in? I mean, if this hasn't been used for who knows how many years, when did a steel culvert go in?
Steel culverts are on Otis.
Right. Oh, on Otis Road. I thought you were talking about...
This stone culvert he's talking about is just off from Otis Road. It's a Class 4. The town's on the hook for replacement and repairs of it.
Yeah, no, I thought you were talking about other culverts along that Class 3 section.
There's three steel culverts on Otis Road that are pretty good-sized.
Okay, but those have to be regardless. Nothing to do with here.
But if it comes as a Class 4, then the town will be taking responsibility for that, too.
And how much... Can I ask how much approximately is a box culvert?
The one on Healy Brook's $175,000.
This one wouldn't be that big, would it?
Probably not as big.
Are the other culverts 6 feet?
This is on Otis though.
The state might let you put a steel culvert back in there.
This is on... You're talking... Now you're talking about that number three section, right, where Josh...
Is the other section definitely Class 4? Al, you know, the one that goes down from my land that's not colored and edged marker there? The Hall Ranch?
Oh, Hall Ranch Road?
Yeah.
From your corners?
Where the old corner? The one that goes down to the sharp corner there?
That's a Class 4 road.
So if that turned into a trail, I wouldn't lose access up to my number two there?
Well, at least I assume it's a Class 4. Down to the bridge, the town's always maintained that bridge down at the bottom.
Yeah.
Down towards 35. And those are just open dips rather than culverts.
So I assume there's no estimate of what this would cost for the town to maintain these roads if they did get back on the map?
As a Class 4?
Yes, as a Class 4.
What standard is a Class 4 for culvert? Does it have to be to take a dump truck over it? No. And if you're talking a trail, something a vehicle might be able to go over. That was an old stone culvert. It was stone slabbed on top. It's just a latten.
Wouldn't it depend on the flows, and wouldn't it have to be hydro...
It's the volume that was there at work. It was four...
But I don't think that counts.
Five feet wide, four feet tall.
Yeah, but I think it's today's standards. It's not what it was.
Even so, it's... I don't think you've got to bury a box culvert like you do on a Class 3 road.
When would you ever have the money to do it? It would be so far now, the...
Priorit...
In time, you'd probably never get to it in priority. If that's been there for so long, the way it is, if it was fixed up some, I'm sure it's been handling the water now. It's going to handle it.
The other thing is, you can use a stone slab bridge. You don't have to have a culvert. State likes bridges. They don't like culverts.
You can't use stone slab because there's no engineered weight load on it.
Use concrete slabs that build. Put the proper foot on them, and that's it. You don't have to have a box culvert.
Eric?
I'd like to comment on basically process. The conversation here is going in the direction of either/or Class 4 road or trail, as though that were an option that we could pick at this time. It's a road. It's been built. It's a, it's a road, it's been built, it was just properly described, so it's still a road. And until such time as you hold a formal hearing to change its classification, it would be default a Class Four road. I don't have a problem personally of the idea of it going on as the Class Four road and then you hold a hearing and decide it's going to be a trail at some point down the line in time. But for right now, you're stuck with it as a Class Four road, just by default.
Yeah, I think it's important to understand that this is a road. This is not something being created. It was a road that's been eliminated. It's, so it has to go back on at something. And it was, it was on, it was a Class Four when it was left off the map. So it would have to go, in my opinion, would have to go back as a Class Four. Then, if you don't like the Class Four classification, then you can make it a trail, or you could make it a pet road or whatever else you want to do with it. But it is a legal road and it needs to be addressed somehow. I mean, that's, I don't, that's my opinion, but anyway, go ahead.
My concern is John Stone Mosher, we live on Hall Ranch Road. And what we were wondering, we heard there was a process called throwing up a road. Because one of the roads, and I don't think it's even used much at all, if at all. I know some people walk on it, which is fine. But it's, it's a road that when we bought the property a little more than a year ago, it said, "Old Town Road." And we were told, "Oh, no one ever goes on it," blah, blah. But it's fine if, you know, hikers go down the road. We have no problem with that, we like recreation. But it makes me feel like we could have something next to us, a road, that at some point is, becomes a bigger road. You know, you never know what the future holds. So I, we, my husband and I like the idea of permitting people to use that road that exists already and people hike on it. And that's fine with us. But we would like to throw it up because that makes it, it would be, it's on our property. It butts our property, there's Sue Haddon has the other side. And I, and I'm new to this, so, you know, please forgive me if I'm saying something outlandish. But I feel, I mean, what we feel now is that we would like to go through whatever the legal process is, to have the road come off the map and then allow people to go, to use it. Because if you can imagine, it's, you know, it's basically private property. And it's, you know, if there are a hundred snowmobiles, I wouldn't be okay with that. But if it's five or 10, you know, occasionally, we don't have a problem with that. But it's, we purposely bought our property on Hall Ranch Road because the acreage had a certain maximum and we felt we were getting privacy. And now we find there's a road.
Does this one have anything to do with the three, the roads we're talking about now?
Well, the road that Josh is talking about, I think, is actually this piece of the road here. And that comes out, my woodshed over here, if you're familiar with the property. So it's this road here, which the snowmobile club doesn't use that. In fact, there's trees across it, there's, there's a yellow verge about this big that's growing in the center of it. So that hasn't been used for a while, this part. The snowmobile club does use this part here and this connector from here over to the road that goes by Delia's and comes down to W.C. Putnam State Forest. There's just a little connector there, that's just probably an old skid road that you tie into, right?
We didn't find a description to continue it, but there's no way in the world that they took a team of horses, pulling a wagon, went down to Hall Ranch, went up to the base of Putnam and hauled them all the way back up on that mountain again. They would go right across that.
Well, they went across here?
Yeah.
But no description, there's no stone walls laid out there.
Problem is, when they did this, it was 1788. They didn't, they weren't actually, I'm surprised their description is as good as it is. Because usually a line of marked trees and two big rocks is where they have the roads. So they, they weren't quite great on getting everything in. But there's no way you could down off that bench on the backside, down there, and come back up.
But we're not talking about this little stretch?
We don't use that down there. As a matter of fact, it's changed shape, so there's a bank there. There is another section that's just down to the one that's depicted there, that I think the road did swing off what we're using now a little bit. And that was a much easier slope to get down there. It's in a grove of trees, it hasn't been used for ever. Nobody's interested in that anymore.
Right, so I think, Zod, the part that you're worried about is this piece right here?
I'm also worried about the part that goes behind our property.
On the south side of your property?
Yep.
Sell a hole in that road and use it down here.
Which part is it right here?
The way I look at the situation, we have a Class Four road.
We do.
And it should have been on the maps and we should do that. If at another time, when we have a public hearing to determine classification, if you folks want to talk to Sue Haddon and bring to the board the idea of throwing that section of road up because the two landowners own it, you can bring that idea to the board and present that. But for right now, we're not at a point in time when we're going to decide this is a Class Four and this is a trail. All we're doing is saying, this is a road that was on the records. We have no record to show that the road has been abandoned, therefore it has to show as a town road.
Okay, I'm Steve John Stone Mosher, also Sandy's Road. I have a couple of questions. First, a little point of information. What you're saying is you have to determine, you have to put these roads on the map, because they were on the map to begin with, so you have to replace them on the map. Whatever class, if it's a Class Four, that's fine, whatever. But at some time in the future, if the question of throwing the road up, I apologize if that's the wrong term, but throwing the road up is considered, then that's a separate issue altogether. But right now, you have to determine the road. My next question is, when that, if that occurs, where the question of throwing the road occurs, who makes that decision? How many people are involved in making that decision? How is that decision, how do they come to that decision?
We hold a public hearing. You hold a public hearing at the site, as I understand. And then there's testimony and proof or whatever. And then it's up to the select board, I believe, to either say yea or nay.
Correct.
That's the process.
So you can just say you hold a meeting at the property?
We'll hold, yes, a hearing.
Site visit.
It's called a site.
Site visit. A public hearing at, a site visit at where the road is.
Then it's adjourned.
And we hold testimony, and then we adjourn that, and we come to, back to this, to here. And we hold a select board meeting. And then we discuss it further. And then the board decides whether they want to throw it up or make it a Class Four or Class Three or whatever the case might be. And just so you understand, if it were a Class Four road, the only people who could bring that road up to, who could bring it up is the landowner. Because the town would never take a Class Four to make it a Class Three. The expense is horrendous. So if there's a Class Four road that exists and it's, it just serves snowmobiles or whatever, the town will never go in there. It's almost impossible to go and make it a Class Three and make it a public highway.
You know, I guess, and I don't know, I don't want to take up the meeting's time, but I like to think ahead and think, you know, places could develop. What if an adjacent property developed and said, you know what? It would be worth my while to make this road a better road so that I can subdivide and cars can go. And it would be a, you know, an inducement to people moving to this area.
But that's not, that's not a simple process. Because if somebody were going to subdivide and build, then they have to go through subdivision regulations, they have to hold a public hearing. It's a very involved process.
I'm familiar with that.
It's not something that just happens overnight.
I agree. I, I'm a little, a little familiar with that. And I would say, yes, totally right. But what I'm saying is, if it happened, if this was all your town, on the map, it's a town road, then it would set precedent for somebody getting that idea that, okay, so there's a town road here. So we could pay to have it upgraded. I'm just saying, it's very speculative, but it's one of the reasons that concerns me and why I want to throw it up, but still share it.
Well, that, that comes to another issue at a different time. But what we have to do, we have to make a decision today, is are we going to put these roads back on? Yes?
Yeah, I just want to add a point of clarification. So the only, the only, the only evidence of this is the 1788 survey, right? I mean, there's no, it's not on the maps going back to 1931. I mean, it's not on any of the town highway maps.
Well, it was on the highway map at some point in time, but it disappeared. We don't know why.
Okay, so, right, my question is, so if it, if, so therefore, if it was on there, then it is automatically a Class Four road. That is the designation that it gets, is a Class Four road.
It was on as a road, so it comes back out as a Class Four.
Comes back out as a Class Four, okay. And then the other clarification question I have is just, was said, I think Bill said this about, I mean, if it's been a Class Four road and then you have all this ATV use, right, and ATVs are not allowed on, what's, what's, what did I hear about Class Four roads and ATVs?
The town has no policy that I'm aware of on Class Four roads, other than the state policy, is that correct?
Yeah, and the state law says no ATVs on Class Four roads.
Okay. So if the state says no ATVs, then it can be, the landowner can enforce that. I will, I will give you a very short situation. I have Class, I have roads that have been discontinued and we have hiking trails and we have the VAS trails go through my 300 acres. We had four-wheelers come and destroy the roads. And I got the game warden, put up cameras, and we found out who did it. So it's up to the landowner, if it's, or the town or somebody to enforce the regulation. But you can't expect the select board or Danny to sit out there and...
No, no, no.
So somebody has, somebody has, but if somebody has an ATV on a Class Four road, then you call the game warden or the state police and they'll come and enforce it.
So if there's a Class Four road, you can put up a sign saying no ATVs?
Yes, you can.
Okay, okay.
Yes, you can.
Two questions. So that brings up the point that no ATV is, what about pickups and four-wheel drives?
Oh, no, you can't.
Well, we've seen them. We've seen the clubs come up the Class Four road from Route 35 right to Hall Ranch.
Yeah, it's registered, I think, right? If it's a registered vehicle, Dave, then you can go on a Class Four. That's why you get the Overland Club. And they came up through there and it's got wood in it, you're a sensible one.
Don't they have to get permission, though?
No, it's a Class Four, once it's on the map and they can, that's what this guy's making a lot of money doing these tours. And he has maps of the Class Four roads, Wyndham County. And these guys pay like $2,500 bucks to come up and they just, and that's all legal. That was kind of my big problem, number two, was right there going by my camper or building my camp. There's going to be an occasion, I have eight of those guys coming up through when I'm up there, I'm not moved.
Years ago, was it at Moeson Races here? I was on the board then, they had to get permission, didn't they, from the town to use them? Or am I dreaming?
No, they were registered, that was off dual sports.
Have you seen the motorcycleers go through here in the summer? Hundreds of them a day.
Hundreds?
Down, down by my house? Yeah. They all get yelled at by Mariannas, they're going too damn fast, but, and they finally slow down. But, no, it's awful. It's awful, they come flying down that road?
Yeah, they come over Putnam Forest Road.
But guess what? I live on a public road. Yeah, well, so what am I going to do about it?
Yeah, I think Wyndham County Sheriff at one time, I think it was over on Townsend Dam, that area there, they went over and they made sure that they had all, they were legal, they had headlights, stoplights, license plates, all brakes work and all that other stuff.
Well, this is the same, same like that other outfitter. I'm sure they're all licensed because he does the same thing. It's the same as the guy with, guys with the trucks.
I think in the past, we've actually contacted the owner of the club and asked them to let us know when they're coming, because they did create damage at one year. So it was kind of almost an unusual agreement, they would let us know.
Yeah, well, it dug up, that wasn't my route, but it was the connector from Putnam State Forest to Hall Ranch. We had fixed that up because I had all that property there, and they actually dug that up, took all my water bars out and everything else.
I think it was just pretty much like a gentleman's handshake to please let us know, and that was the agreement we had with them in the past.
And they did, and they did come back, they did some damage on Hall Ranch and they did come back. Well, they fixed it before they used it and then they fixed it after. But it wasn't possible, they had to fix it before they used it.
But a question to you, Bill, if this road goes back on as a, as a Class Four road and then there's a hearing and it turns to a trail, then they can't, the clubs can't use this road for their cars and Jeeps and everything, is that correct?
That's correct.
Second question. So if, given the historical uncertainty of everything that's going on here, and if it's in play that the road might become a trail if we have a hearing, can you defray the maintenance and expenses and maybe the liability until the time of that hearing? Because what I'm hearing is some concern over the kind of expense that might have to be taken on all of a sudden if these are put on, you know, recognized as Class Four roads.
I assure you that if the road goes on as a Class Four road tonight, and it takes three months to go to something else, nobody is going to put any money in that road. There's no money in the budget, believe me. So I would, I would, I would not, I would not have any fear that any money is going to be spent on this road.
Well, there hasn't been any spend on it before, it's not a Class Four.
Didn't know what fire would be under your breath.
So am I to understand that if it is a Class Four road, you can drive vehicles on it, regardless of, you just said that.
I wasn't aware of that.
Oh, okay.
Registered.
Registered, yeah, it's a registered, so if you've got a license plate on it, you can drive on that road?
You can.
But an ATV that's not registered can't go on that road.
Okay. I'd rather have an unregistered ATV on the road than a registered four-wheel drive. But that's another story.
ATVs are supposed to be registered, they're off their own land anyway.
ATVs cannot be on the, on the, on the Class Four unless the town allows them. They could be licensed up to Yingang, doesn't matter.
There's been arguments.
If they're ATVs, they can't be on the road.
But we have no problem.
Unless they're street legal. If they're street legal, which you can make an ATV street legal, but it costs you about $10,000. But if you, if you're street legal, they can't.
There's been arguments in that town, like that, throughout the towns and the state. And some towns allow them or they don't challenge it. Others try to enforce it and they can't. So I'm not sure it's quite cut and dried that it's not legal.
Well, the biggest thing is, whether it's legal or not, if you make it illegal, that's all, all you're doing is saying, don't do that. You're not, unless you have some way to enforce it, doesn't matter.
Don't keep, don't work. So it's up to the select board to oversee it, but not really sure how much you can do.
It's very difficult to oversee, I mean, you have to have a, you have to ride the roads and spend the time there.
Can I call a question?
Any discussion on calling a question? All in favor?
You don't have a question?
Why do you have a motion?
Oh, that's right, we need a motion.
Can I, I just have a question, so I understand you would need a hearing in three months around the idea of, if it goes back on a Class Four road, and then you need a hearing to make, about it being a trail. What about putting condition, I mean, we've also talked about the possibility of conditions on it. Would that require, what's the process for that, the conditions part? Not the, it sounds like the town can make, put any conditions on it, does that require a hearing? The trail part, I understand requires a hearing. But the conditions, even on a Class Four road with conditions, does that require a hearing? What's the process for getting those?
I think, I think the town, town can develop the policy, can it not?
Yeah, but for this road in particular, you probably want to have a hearing. It wouldn't, it'd be a public hearing, but it would be, I mean, it isn't like a classification hearing, a hearing on what restrictions you want. Or you put these restrictions on all Class Four roads.
Right.
And it really could be... And, and it really could be the same restriction on all class four roads, and that is, is, uh, no ATVs, and in the winter time, uh, restrict the use to, you know, you have some, you have some class fours that are used, with guys using them every day, so, so you could, you could name them out, which ones you want to keep, just winter roads for, for vast terrain. But you could do that. It's, it's, it's not nearly as formal as trying to classify.
Can you stop the...
But the town could develop its own class four policy.
Absolutely, that's what most towns do.
Yeah, and we don't have one. We just use whatever the state is. Alan?
Well, I think, I think the same issue is going to arise. You know, Josh is interested in protecting that piece of road that, and he'd like to shut it down during mud season so that it doesn't get torn up. That same issue's going to happen. It's not going to happen right away, but eventually, GIA's going to probably spend some money repairing Walker Road and out by the Yellow House to, to have future access. Once they put the money into that, fixing that road up, class four road, they're not going to want to have it torn up any more than Josh wants that road tore up. And one afternoon in the right time, somebody can ruin a whole thousand dollars worth of work in a hurry.
I can tell you exactly. I've had experience with they did to mine.
But my point is, I think we need to have a policy, and, and we need to identify some roads that we want to, allow them to be gated, or, or whatever we come up with. I know, um, trail systems on Spate Land are open, they have gates in places. They're gated during mud season. Once the roads dry out, they open them back up again. And, and then they open them up once the snow is good for snowmobiling. So, and they're just trying to protect that, that fragile time when the roads are wet, they get, get torn up. We're going to have to come up with something.
Alan, Bill?
Don't think you can gate them. You can gate them, but you can't lock it. You can put a sign on it, "Don't use during this season of the year," or whatever, but you can't lock it. State law.
On the state land, yes?
Well, I think, I think we have those.
Park roads, they do gate. That's their property.
They, uh, the state forest highways are under a different, uh, classification or different rules. So they can do to, they can lock theirs.
Only these ones are locked.
Correct. That's a state forest highway. It's not a town road. So there is a difference. Yep, yep.
And the club, the club has access to that. And the club opens the gate during the snowmobile season and shuts the gate during, when it's over. I think it's December 15 through April 15, something like that, Ronnie?
15.
Yeah. So if you go up there now, the gates are open. You go up there after that, the gates are shut. But there's an, you can walk through them, or you can ride your horse through them, or whatever.
I guess, I guess, I guess with gates, if you can't lock them, can you make them, I mean, can you basically have them there so they're, they don't allow passage of certain vehicles at certain times of year? And then you take them out, or, I don't know?
I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know that.
But, but I think, the, the question we have to decide today is, is are you going to put one, three, and two on the map, or just one and two, or none? Because they are, they are roads, and we have to make that decision. And then we can, if, if they go back on, then we can hold a public hearing and convert it to trails, or whatever else you want.
Well, if none of the roads have been thrown up or decided, it seems to me, they all go back on, and then you decide.
Exactly.
What comes off.
Yeah.
And what comes off is probably at the same hearing when you're deciding what's going to be a trail, what's going to be class four.
I, I would agree.
And so for tonight, I would make a motion that we put the roads back on the map, and then we set a hearing for classification.
Do we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Yes?
I don't want to belabor it, but if we wanted to appeal to have these roads thrown up, I, I grant you, you're going to have to determine whether they go back on the map or not. But if we want in the very near future to appeal to whatever authority we have to appeal to, to have a, to SLUT to throw it up, what would we need to do?
You, 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 you need to go and you build terms, and tell them what section of road you want to be thrown up, and then there'll be, there'll be a public hearing. But I believe you can, Bill, you can answer this better than I can.
They need a petition by, signed by 25 people to get rid of the road.
And what, 25 people that are affected by the road or anywhere?
Residents.
Residents. I can't go to the Bronx and have 25 of them.
Oh, yeah, and legal voters.
Legal voters.
Any discussion on the motion? So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so then we need to...
Alan, just let me, I didn't get a second.
Uh, Chris did stand, I'm sorry. So what we need to do...
Wait a minute. To put the roads on the map and have a hearing on the classification.
Correct.
At a future date.
Okay. Yes, Sue's?
Wouldn't it be possible for us to set the date of the hearing now?
No.
No.
It's clear?
No. It's a complicated process.
Tell you what, I got to talk to the city and find out what we have to do to put them back on the map. So this is a simple process.
Sue, this is a complicated process, and it's not something we're going to decide today. Okay, we have the, we have the V-Trans Annual Certification of Mileage that needs to be signed by all the work. So I have the documents here. Can we have a motion to, uh, it's been checked out. So can we have a motion to accept the certificate of highway mileage year ending February 10th, 2020?
Second.
Okay, second, okay. Any discussion? Yes, Bill?
I just wanted to, what, we're taking off there, because somehow in 2016 or so, we, that was never taken off, the last 347 feet or whatever, and this removes legal trail eight. Those two are gone.
It doesn't affect our income from the state because they're class four roads.
So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll pass it down. You guys can sign it, please.
There aren't any lines, just sign.
Yeah, just where I signed, then just go across. Excessive permit, did you take care of that, Bill?
Yes. Yes, I've got them here. There are three permits from Barrett Trucking out of Burlington, Valley Creek Services out of Vernon, and Renaud Brothers out of Vernon.
So they're all set?
Yes, they're all set with insurance.
With insurance.
So do we need a motion to accept them?
Yes.
So, so Alan, not a motion? Second?
Second.
And authorize me to sign. And authorize the bid to sign? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, the truck bid, that's the next item. Chris, that's in your hands.
The same one we did a lot of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Read it again, or?
So, Dennis, we're going to award it. We're going to award it.
Okay.
So, I think what we want is to get Danny's input, that's what we asked for, for Danny to review and comment.
So all the specs are the way that we wrote, so they need the specs. This, I would just say if you're arguing, if you're trying to buy the extended warranty.
Did, did you look at the extended warranty as specifics?
And what they are offering is the highest that you can buy. You're still going to have some components that aren't covered, wear wires are never covered.
Right.
But those, those are the highest ones that they offer.
When you say highest, you mean the longest, the longest available warranty?
It's the best warranty you can buy for that vehicle.
And that was at eight, eight thousand or something?
Eight, yes.
Eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars for the warranty, the warranty.
That's seven years.
Some with five, some with seven.
And then that's for the, uh, the, the net price of 146, 19, 146,000 dollars.
That includes the warranty?
Plus the eight thousand.
Plus the eight thousand.
So it's 154,000, 174.
So that everybody understands here, that might not understand, this, this, the person, this truck is already in the capital budget, so this money has been set aside over the period of five, six years. So it's, it's, it's not, it's not something we're just going to go spend. The money is available for it. It's time to replace the truck after seven years.
Plus it takes, we commit to a truck now, it takes a year before we get the truck.
And this is maybe not exactly just for one road, but I mean, it's, it's basically to go through a covered bridge.
Yeah.
It's a single axle truck, which always has a smaller one, but it has a regular roof where it runs.
Yeah, right. But you could, on the other road, you could use a different, a different truck.
Yes.
We have to get the smaller one because of the covered bridge.
This, this is going to be a little bigger than one that we presently have, but it's going to be like the original single axles that they used to have. But it will go across the covered bridge.
You're sure? Even with the wing and all that?
You may not go through with the wing on.
Oh, okay.
But that's, I mean, we're lucky that the last one went through with the wing on. But the truck itself will go through.
The truck, but I'm talking about the wing and the plow and the wing.
Plow, plow and truck will, the wing, you never know until you get in, see. You used to plow that with a one ton truck, so.
And I had a wing on?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
On the one ton?
Yes, the last one.
Did you really? That must have been when I was in Florida. I, I remember having a one ton with a wing, but, okay. All right, so what do we need? No motion here or something?
Make motion to accept the bid as presented.
To approve the bid.
Approved the bid. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Who's that bid from, by the way, just for curiosity?
Patriot, ATG Patriot.
Danny, do you have any other things that you want to talk about highway?
Um, I have a question on the highway. At the last meeting, and it shows in our minutes, we talked about, um, some trees that needed to be pruned on 121 opposite, or the, on the other side of the road from Howell Hill Ridge. Did that letter get sent out that we talked about?
I don't think it did, but, uh, because I think...
I don't have any authority. You guys are going to name the tree warden. Let's get the tree warden named and on the job, and have him do it.
But I talked to Joe after the meeting.
I was going to send the letter as, as a, as a first starter. So you've been sick, and then I was sick, so let's, let's meet this coming week, and we can, we can form a letter to the, asking him to prune his trees, and we can talk about the tree wardens when we get down to the item. But lately, we can, we can get a start there.
Well, I know everybody's been sick, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, no, I know, and I haven't done it. Bill's been, been sick, and we haven't done it. But I, I did volunteer to write that letter, so.
You know, you don't...
Yes?
There's no authority at all for me to write a letter, for you to write a letter, for all five of you to write a letter. Hey, you know, read this tree warden statute. I gave it to you. The tree warden has the authority to determine when a disease or something else, or if there is, there is a danger to the highway. At that time, the tree warden could then order the trees removed, and if they're not removed, then, or trimmed, then you could trim them. I don't have that authority. I'm not the tree warden.
Alan, let's, let's put it to the tree warden. This, I've read the statute, and it's very, it's very definitive. And the tree warden has a huge amount of power.
It also sounds like, the way I read it, was that he has the, it sounds like that person would have the responsibility also in the town park, it being town land, that for, for trees that are potential hazardous trees and things like that.
And he can, he has also, he has all, he or she has the power to go on to private property if there's a diseased tree and cut it down. With no, with no...
Be in the town right of way?
No, on your own personal property. If the tree is diseased and it's going to cause other damage to other trees that are on the town's property, that individual can go on and cut that tree down. There's a tremendous amount of power. And he's the one that is also is, would be the person who would handle the, the bore problem with the ash trees, because that is, that is so, it's very important that we, the SLUT board, appoint somebody who is a real tree warden, who wants to take on the job. And it's his duty then to write the policy, and then it's our duty to approve it. That's how I agree with the statute.
Well, could we, uh, could we craft the letter for the tree warden's signature?
Well, we could, I guess, sure.
So I'll, and that way we can get the job done. We can get those cleaned up, so that, uh...
Does the town need to have permission to cut brush? Now with these new rules they're trying to put in?
The question is, the, the town can go in and prune town right-of-way property. And we talked about this last meeting. There was a policy, and I remember I was on the board, and I think Stan was on the board, maybe John was at the same time, that we had a policy that we would notify the landowner, and if the landowner didn't comply, we would go and do it. It was like a courtesy. And so, but we can't find that anywhere in the, any of the ordinances or, or statutes that we have. So the question is, do you just go cut it, or do you let the, to me, I would, I would be courteous and go and talk to the landowner, and let the landowner know that this is an issue, explain to her why, and, and have it done. And then if he doesn't do it, then you go and do it yourself. I mean, you can't have trees hurting mirrors and spending hundreds of dollars to put a new mirror every time you plow, so.
I agree.
So we have to send the letter out every time we want to go cut brush somewhere?
No, no, I don't think that's, I don't think, it depends on, on what the situation is, Danny. I mean, if it's just, uh, you know, somebody's forest land along Henley Brook and nobody owns it, I don't think it's a problem. But this, these are trees that he planted. I think, these are not na, these are not native trees, correct?
Oh, he doesn't want you cutting them at all.
Well, I understand that. But he, he planted trees, and the trees now are infringing in the right-of-way, so he is in violation. As long as the trees stay out of the right-of-way, then we have no jurisdiction, so.
Well, it's actually, it's all the way from the fire department, all the way right up through to, also the peace property.
Right. There's, there's, there's not one landowner.
No, oh.
There's multiple.
Well, there's two, a couple of ways we can handle it. We can have, we can have the tree warden do this, or we can wait for another meeting or so until the, until we have the, the town meeting, and appoint a tree warden, and let the tree warden go and develop the policy, and then take care of it. I mean, that's, how do you want to handle it?
Well, are you going to tell me that if it's in the highway road right-of-way, Danny has to go get a tree warden to do that, to get approval to do that? It seems like that, that's in our jurisdiction when it's in the road right-of-way.
You know, it's, it's, it's a ticklish situation as I look at it.
No, it's cut and dry. It's not, if, if people are going down that road, and there's a tractor trailer coming up, and he's hit, he's hitting that brush, and he swears, he swears out to get away from that noise, because he doesn't know what it is, and hits a car head-on the other way, we're at fault. That's our right, road right-of-way. I think it's very cut and dry, anything in the right-of-way. We have to maintain it safely.
Bill?
Shave and ornamental trees within the limits of the public ways and places shall be under the control of the tree warden. Period. That's the first sentence. And then it talks about if you have to prune them and so on, because they're causing problems, and then he is the person that is the one that, please correct.
I, I, I understand.
Is this not being proposed, or is this the state law?
No, this is the law, Danny.
So when you gave me the other form, saying the state law, it said that we had the right to cut anything in the right-of-way if it was a danger, a problem with the road. So which one am I supposed to go by?
Well, typical Vermont, they have two laws, and they conflict one another.
Wow.
Let me read them side by side. No, I'm, I'm being serious.
I mean, if you read that...
This isn't the only law that conflicts, you ought to read the planning law.
Well, is it possible that they both have authority? The tree warden has the authority.
Okay.
By that, and the highway department also has that authority.
Okay, if I write the letter for, for Tracy, is he going to, and, and Don Lawrence confronts him, is, is he going to send it up to Don Lawrence? And cut the damn trees down?
It's not Don Lawrence, it's Rod Lawrence.
Rod Lawrence.
I don't know.
And that's number one, number two, since there is a, a question of jurisdiction, you know he's gonna come after us.
Yes, right.
Rod, you know he's gonna contest it, so let's be right, okay?
See, as I read, as I read the, um, the laws, Title twenty-four, there, there's no question about it, the tree warden has undisputable power to handle any tree anywhere in the town. Simple. So to me, that surplus, that, that is, whatever Danny was, was told that we have the, have the right to cut brush in the right of way, maybe that's true, but the, the tree warden is the holy grail of that, according to the law.
I don't think he has right on private property.
Hmm?
I don't think he has right on.
He does, I read the law, Bill, you don't have it here. He can go in to a tree that's affected, if it's affecting other trees, he has the right to go in and cut that tree.
No, he's talking about public ways and public places.
I didn't read that way, but that's okay.
Read right in the middle.
Well, that's what I was saying about the public places, he may be able to go up on the, the town park, the town forest up here and be able to make those decisions too.
So, so how do we wanna leave this? Do we wanna, I mean, do you wanna just post, do you wanna just go in and cut his trees? Do you wanna call the tree warden that we have, or do you wanna wait until we appoint a tree warden? Or a new tree warden? Speak. And any ideas?
I, I think we, on this thing, I think we, at this point, we're so close to town, town meeting, I mean, whether, whether we, we, we reappoint the existing person or pick a new one. And let's, let's then start with these, I mean, there, there should've been an awareness, I mean, it's, it's maybe even new office, or maybe even the tree warden that, that's currently there.
Well, it's doing to me, I, I mean, as a result of the last meeting, I, I researched the law, and I had no idea that the tree warden has such, such vast power, so I think it's very important that when we, whoever is the new board members here, when you do your appointing, we have to get somebody who is literally a tree warden, who's going to take this job on, it's not just a title.
Could, could we write a letter to Rod Lawrence and, and say that we've broken a couple of, of the mirrors on, on our town trucks, would you please prune your br, your trees back? Ask him if he would do it first.
Well, I thought that was the, the initial claim.
I have no problem writing the letter, personally.
But, I mean, it's different, it's different than we say, we're gonna come and cut them.
No, no, no.
We're asking them to be responsible, that their trees are in the road right of way. Please, cut them back so that our, our, our town trucks, as well as other trucks, are not hitting their mirrors on that brush that's in the road right of way.
Yep.
And he may, he may just want it up and throw it away, but he might take care of it.
I, I don't have a problem writing the letter, chair, as if the board so directs me. I have no problem with it, whether I have the right to do it or not, I'm courtesy.
Well, to, to ask him to do it is a right. You have to ask first. You gotta give the courtesy of.
Well, we should send it to anybody who has effects along the road. And I don't, we need to get a list of the people and send, send a letter.
You could, you could put right in the letter, there are numbers of places, for instance, rather than appointing one specific winner, and, and you're just one of them.
Well, right.
Okay.
Should we also mention the letter that we are appointing a tree warden and he will have the authority to do the trimming?
Well, he already has the authority.
But disinterfere with that.
Yeah. Look, we can, we can mention that.
He's always let us prune them before, it's just, you wanna let him know.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, so that's okay? Get the letter out? Okay, I'll do this one. Okay, move on here. Number six is the commission for the report back to the school commission, did we get anything, Bill, from that?
I have nothing.
From Jack?
I have nothing, I don't know if Hardy has something.
You got any, Hardy?
I would just suggest that if we come up with a commission, you know, right now, they aren't gonna do anything until this, in this budget year, which is coming up through April ninth, so I don't think there's any real rush here to take this on. I'm interested in being on the commission, I talked with John Turner, I think he might be interested in getting on the commission, and I think Junie might be interested, and there could be others. So, nobody has been cast in stone here, and I think the verbiage, the verbiage that you have about the commission is probably okay, it's just they need to get the people and then determine when they're gonna start really fulfilling, which is probably, you know, after April ninth, when we have the, the school meeting.
Okay. Is everybody satisfied with that? Okay. Alright, Act sixty, I always, I sent you an article that was in the Brownlow Reformer.
Thanks, Danny.
And the reason why I, I, I put this in, and I, I sent it to Jack Brier as well, and I haven't heard an answer back from him yet, but the legislature, they're, they're urging the boards to have testimony at the state level about changing Act sixty, 'cause that's in essence what this is. And Act sixty's not working. And, and it gives, I think we have, we as a town, and all, all the other towns, have an opportunity to get our word out there, and possibly they could make some changes to this Act sixty, because I mean, it makes no sense that, that, you know, West Minister's getting all this money and they're fixing up the school and they're taking our money to fix their schools up, but we don't have it, and it's, it's really a shame. So I'm willing to go up to Montpelia, if there's any volunteers to, to do this testimony, but I was, hopefully that maybe Jack and some of the other people on the school board would also be interested in doing it. I, I just read the, the latest weekly legislative report, and they are, they are tackling this thing, it's student waiting study, and it, they wanna change the entire, I mean, this is the proposal, how they fund the schools. So, I think it's, I think we have, we have an opportunity, I don't know what's gonna happen up in Montpelia, but I think there's an opportunity at least to make yourself heard.
What, do we want to form our commission, school commission, and get names so they can go to testify?
I don't know, I don't think, I don't think it's necessary a commission, I think it just, it's just gotta come from, from the town, either the select board or the school board to contestify and say, this is, you know, this is egregious, this is not the way it should be done.
I understand, but when you go there for testimony, you have to tell them who you are and, and what your capacity in town is.
Well, I mean, if Jack Brier goes, and he's, he's on the school board, and if, if I, if I go, or you go, and you're a select board, you have your qualifications.
I, I, I hear you, but I'm just saying, if you want Hardy to go, or, or John Turner to go, or John to go, if they were commissioners, then they could go representing the town as school commissioners. That's the only question.
Hey, I, I don't care, I'm just, I put it on here because I think we do have an opportunity. Whatever the best way is, I just think we need to make our, our voice heard, that's all I'm saying. Hardy, do you have any comments to that, or?
Well, I'm gonna be in Florida, leaving on Monday, next Monday.
Bill?
Hardy, what do you know about this, the change in the, in the school funding by changing, changing the weights on the children?
I know nothing more than what I also read in the Brownlow Reformer article, that's the only thing I know about it. I tried to go online a little bit the other day, and I didn't find a lot of information.
If you go on the legislative report, the last, that's probably the one you have, they go, they go into it.
Yeah, I, I tried to get you a copy, they do go through what the proposals are, and what they're discussing, and various things, it's very interesting. And I don't know how successful they're going to be, but if they are successful, it will change the way school funding is starting to town, particularly small towns.
I think it has most to do with how they develop equalized pupils.
Yeah.
Equalized number of pupils in a town.
Yes. But then.
And how much that town's gonna receive, depending on the, um, the.
Grants.
Quality, whatever you call it.
Small, small town grants, I think.
No, 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 each, it, it depends on how many kids you have in this type of program, that type of program, how many kids don't have food at all, how many kids earn this, and the money that goes to that town changes by those numbers.
Right, this is, the report says here.
That's what it says.
It says, "This report identified four categories of factors that affect educational costs and are outside the school's district control. Individual student risk, students may need specific programs and interventions. Social contacts of the schooling such as concentrated poverty. Scale and sparsity, including enrollment, size, population, reality, rural, rurality, which affects the cost of, of providing specialized services. Geographic variations in prices of employee wages, contract services, fuel, equipment, supplies." So those are the factors I think they're, they're looking at to change this funding. What that means, I can't tell you, but that's.
Well, if you look at the chart, it means a lot.
Yeah.
One of those categories, they go up, as a, a student that is, an ordinary student is twenty-five cents, it's almost three dollars.
Right.
So, and how, how will it affect our, our students? I don't know, how many fit that category, I don't know.
I don't know either.
Maybe we get done more money, I don't know.
I don't know, but I think somebody, I think there should be somebody from the town going to Montpelia or speaking to other towns to, to make sure that we're getting a fair share.
Have they announced the date and time of the hearing?
No, not yet, it's, they're, it's still going on. But it's something I think that we need to move on quickly, I'd be aware of, VLCT could probably tell us. So if there's any, you know, I, I'm waiting for Jack to get back to me, so he would be the logical person.
If you need somebody to go with you, I would go as a select board person, and I wasn't on the school board for six years, so.
Okay, that's all I wanted to, to talk about. Town hall, talk about pointing basement wall cleanup, Dan, that's you?
Yeah, this, this goes back again to the, to the town hall sort of renovation projects that we've been doing. This, this is stuff that should've been done really years ago. I mean, the repointing of the basement wall, what's happening, all of the, the basements are all laid up, stone, and the mortar between the stones all falling out, drying up, it's just turning, literally turning to dust. I had somebody in there and looked at it, and he thought that he could fit it in to the end of the, the winter, his winter schedule and get it done. That that would be a job not to exceed two thousand dollars, and I was hoping that we could take that out, because this is a job that should've been done a long time ago. We've got, town hall maintenance is in the budget, I, somewhere around, I think there's like eight thousand or something left in that. The cleanup, the, the basement itself is pretty much a pigsty. There's old furniture and stuff piled up down there, and that's all I got to worry about. I've got somebody to go down there already, I didn't give him the go-ahead to do it, but he has looked at it, clean up the, the proverbial basement spider webs and the dirt, and the junk that's on the dirt floor. He was gonna rake all up and haul it out. Again, that should be under the maintenance of the town hall. The other thing that should've been done.
Dan, if I'm not reading this correctly, there's fifteen thousand in the town hall.
But what's, I think, left this year?
Oh, yeah, okay, but I mean, that's what's proposed for next year.
Yeah, that's next year, but I'm saying between now and, and July, I think it's, it's eight thousand that's, that's left. Anyway, that's, I, I would like to just stop, I, I wanna continue, but I'd like to just stop there and, and at least present this to the board, hopefully get an approval to, to be able to do this. Would be to clean the, the basement up and then do some repointing on the, the basement walls, and that would come out of that, the current budget for the, for the town hall maintenance.
I thought we discussed this at the last meeting, and, and I thought we already voted to move forward.
Well, I think, the way, way I understood it, we sort of voted to look into it, and I just wanna make sure that we have a, a go-forward, if that's, if that's the case, I, I would love to.
So let's make a motion.
I'd make a motion that we proceed with three activities.
Two right now.
Well, you're not gonna put the rubber mat in?
Well, let's just do the two.
Alright, let's proceed with the first two items on the list.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any other, I've got my only question, why, why do you wanna postpone the rubber mat?
Well, I don't wanna postpone it, but I'm thinking that's kind of a new thing, I would like to reflect that back to this, a ten-year ago study that was done. And I was thinking that we could do that as far as the, the sort of the next, we had staged the, the processes of, of renovating the town hall. I would love to be able to just move forward, I mean, if we, if we can do that, I would love to do that.
Do you have a price, or?
I don't.
Estimate on the paper?
Well, well, how about if we have eight thousand left, if that's the number, which I don't have in front of me.
Yeah.
And we have that money, then let's do the rubber, if it, they can't do it, then, but you have money for next year, so you could do it out of.
Well, we've also got six months or whatever the number is left in that, that budget, I didn't wanna drain that, that line item.
But that money is dedicated to town hall.
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
So that's what it's for.
Yeah. Yes.
Also, in the capital budget, that's over eleven thousand dollars, I can't remember the exact number.
That's right.
Perfect, right.
That's in the capital budget, and do stuff related to the town.
So, do you, would you like us to amend it, to do all three?
Okay, yeah, that would be, I mean, right now, it.
Dan, go ahead.
Provided it doesn't exceed five grand.
Yes.
Well, they're gonna be chopped up.
They're, they're.
No, no, I'm, I'm talking about the vapor, provide the vapor so that you have the one.
Well, is it five or eight, do you know what the actual number is?
Well, it was five.
Okay, five.
Yeah. I don't think that's a problem, but.
I don't think it's a problem either.
There, 'cause there's, there's three places that it has to be done, and we could, if we had to stretch that out just a little bit.
But Hardy's right, there's money in the, in, in the capital budget, and there's also money for next year's budget, so you could, you could stretch that out to July.
Well, I, I just wanted to, my thought was, if we did the, the, the pointing and the cleanup and the maintenance, and then we can do the other as part of that capital budget, that is just gonna break that.
But if we have, we should have the authority to do it and then we go forward with it.
Does, does any of this go for bid?
Only if it's over five thousand for each of the projects, the first two, nowhere's near. And there's three definitive sections, we got the two crawl spaces, one underneath where Bill's office is, one underneath where Kim's office is, the, the town clerk, and the actual rear part of the basement, I mean, there is just, it is dirt, you can see where it's wet. I've already talked to somebody about looking into that rear section of the basement, just because it's winter and you have to crawl in through the outside to get into the other ones. I didn't go there. But absolutely has gotta be done. And I, and I just have, if we can, if we can do this, I'd like to okay this, then I have another thing I do wanna talk about.
Bill?
Are we limiting it to then the, the three areas that are open to, you know, that have, basically you walk in?
That's, that's one area, the two areas, one, you have to crawl in underneath your spot.
That's what I mean, we're not gonna do that.
Yes, we want, we have to do that. We have to do that. And under Kim's office, we have to do that.
At this time?
We should.
Well, you're not, you're not doing it tomorrow, you could do it in April or May, whatever.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that's once you get into better weather.
Okay, the only problem I have is, with this is, the five thousand has to cover the whole thing, or no deal?
Why? We have three different things, we're gonna spend five thousand dollars, so.
Not the same person doing all the things.
Time out, I'm not talking about the three things, I'm talking about the vapor. If the vapor can all be done in those, all those areas that are less than five, then you don't need to bid it out.
Right.
If he comes back and, and you come back and say, well, he did two of the areas and that was five thousand dollars, we have another area to go. No, that ain't gonna work.
I was going to make the motion that we proceed with the work and do the vapor barrier if it's less than five thousand. If it's going to be more than five thousand, then we put it out to bid, do that work, because we have the money in the budget.
But I wanted to make sure we're talking about the whole area, so we're talking about everything underneath this building.
Correct.
Now, just, just to clear my mind, are we doing that because it's one building? Or do we do that because it's related? Because we don't, we don't bid out fuel. Because we don't, we don't bid out fuel for the town hall along with the highway department? Those are considered too different and distinct, although they're both heating?
So my, my answer to that?
Yeah.
You want basement vapor sealed. And you want to use this, this vapor seal, this rubber matting thing? It's either gonna cost $5,000 for the whole damn thing, or you need to bid it out.
Right, that's, that's my motion.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I understand.
So I don't see a problem with that.
No, my, my question was, is we don't bid out fuel oil because each of the two buildings are less than 5,000?
I'm not buying into that at all, I'm talking about you're vapor sealing a building, what's gonna cost to vapor seal that?
That's my question, so are we talking about like heating fuel for the, for the town? I look at it as being the town, because one's the highway garage, which is, I'm picking a number, $4,500. And then the, we spend over 4,000 in, in fuel just for the town hall. But those are two distinct, separate, although it's heating for the town?
I don't think so.
We don't bid it out?
We haven't bid it out because, yes, we do attempt to bid it out, but.
No, we don't.
Did you kind of finish?
Sure.
But when you, when you call around to get the bids, I can either not get a bid, or the initial thing they tell you over the phone is a lot harder than what we're paying now.
But I also thought, Stan, that we decided last year, because of the service we got from James, they didn't want to bid that out. But we can revisit that again for next year, but let's not confuse the issue.
Let's not talk about fuel, let's talk about what we're talking about, and let's do it.
Yeah, let's do it, so. I mean, whether it's, it's one building, it's $5,000, if they exceed that, then you gotta put it in the bid. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, so any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so you can go ahead and do all three things, Stan.
All right, now, let me just go back to this real quick. One of the things, there was this energy audit that was done 10 years ago. And I don't know, it was the last time anybody read this, but when they did this, they did airflow of blower door test, and I know some of this stuff has been done, but what they found out 10 years ago, there's enough air leaks in that building, is if you left like the garage door open overnight and attempted to heat your garage. So there is so many things that really should be done. We sort of jumped the gun, in essence, we, all of a sudden, we ended up going out and getting bids for heat pumps. Not quite sure how we got to that. But one of the things we have to be concerned about is I really think we should be looking at continuing the, the envelope of the building before we jump into this next aspect of how we're going to.
You're talking sealing and weatherization?
Yes, right. And that's part of this vapor barrier. If you look back in the report 10 years ago, it is one of the things that they recommend. And again, that was done 10 years ago, and we haven't done it yet.
Well, I agree with you, I think, I mean, whether you have propane, whether you have wood, whether you have oil, if you're gonna heat something and it's all gonna escape, then you should fix the escape before you fix the boiler or the, or the type of fuel you use. So I would agree, Stan, I think you need to make the building efficient, and then you can find out which is the best fuel to do something.
Because one of the problems is, is that we got, we were getting bids for these heat pumps, and the problem is with the R-values that's currently in the building, you're gonna have to oversize the units, because your heat loss is so great right now.
But that doesn't make sense.
And then if you tighten the building up, your units are oversized, and you end up short cycling and all this other stuff. So I really think we have to continue on with, with this thing, and then we look at.
I couldn't agree more. There's no sense buying something that you don't need if, once you fix the leaks.
Right.
Eric?
I agree wholeheartedly with what Stan is saying, and would urge that as soon as we can proceed down this path, that we bring in a consultant that is skilled in building science. I have somebody in mind, probably for initial sees if the building would come under your $5,000, but we happen to have him in the region, and he is expert in this area. We don't want to tighten the building up without considering the moisture transport. We can, we can throttle the building up, make it heat efficient, and, and make it rock to the ground if we do it wrong. There's a company in Brownsville called Building Right, and Peter Yoast is the guy that runs it. He is the regional expert on building science. We should bring him in as a consultant to guide the process of bringing this building back up to high efficiency. And absolutely, bring him in before you add heating, bring him in before you tighten the envelope up. You need to have that kind of expertise before charting ahead.
I have no, I have no problem with that. I know that, I know that, that you can have a situation, you make the building too tight, then you have a moisture problem. I, I know in my, my house, that if I, if I had my fireplace going, which those suck air from outside, so that's not an issue, and I put my blower on, and I get smoke in the house, because everything is so damn tight. So, you know, it's, it's all well and good, but all these new technologies that you have for your house, you just can't go and do them. There are other things that you have to do to, to make it happen, so I couldn't agree
But if anybody wants, this is an interesting piece of literature to, to read. Like I said, this was done 10 years ago.
I can shed some more light on that, because I was working on both sides of the equation on that. I was in the WRC Energy Committee, which provided the grant, and I was also here to see what went on. The top side of the building is actually pretty well sealed, the ceiling of the second floor, and what you could get at for the sidewalls coming down. There are solid brick walls that you can't put any insulation into. There are cavity walls on the stairwell going up that never got completely filled, and we know this because of the infrared thermography that was done. We had that done twice before and after. Absolutely a tool that has to be used. We got down to the point of the first floor, and there was a change of legislature, and all of a sudden, the project never was pursued any further than that. There was nothing done for the basement to follow the plan. It's a, it's a work in progress that we're really glad that Stan is bringing up, because the building should be done right, and it will be a lot more energy than it should have been.
No question. I, I served on the board with Stan 20 and some odd years ago, and we were all gonna do the stuff, and it just never got done. So I'm very happy that we're actually trying to tackle the problem.
That center hole in the ceiling of the second floor, it was kind of dark. That actually was dark because it was a straight hole. It's capped now, but it was a straight hole, but it threw.
Okay, so Stan, you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay, the tree warden, I think we've discussed that.
Well.
But you have something, Chris?
Just for the Emerald Ash Borer, is that where we're at?
Yeah.
I was thinking of possibly appointing a committee with a town brain trust, if you will, of people who know forestry, and would be able to advise a select board as to what has worked, what hasn't worked for other municipalities that have dealt with this issue. It wouldn't have to be a permanent committee, but just as, as this infestation is wrapping up, make sure that we have the best information.
I have no problem with that, I, I think, I think you have to do that in conjunction with whoever's gonna be the new tree warden.
Certainly, that, he would probably be the, the natural for the commission, but there are other people who could participate and advise.
Or you just might want to look at that. So that red, the red areas on there, they call it the Friday map, but the red area is the areas that have known Emerald Ash Borer currently.
So it looks like we're a part of that?
The yellow area is high risk. Two-thirds of graphism is, is in the high risk. Because it's, it's already been positively identified in the town of Londonary.
So do you want to, you want to motion, Chris, or how do you want to handle this?
Well, should we have the tree warden first, and then stand up the committee?
I, I probably would get the tree warden, and then let the tree warden work with Bill?
You better have a subcommittee to work on your tree warden, otherwise it'll be here two weeks from now, and we won't have a tree warden.
Well, that's probably true. It's gonna be, to get it, it's gonna be, it's not gonna be easy to find somebody's, this is a very time-consuming thing. It's not something you're just gonna go and do one day, one hour a week or something. If this problem really gets serious, which it probably will.
Right, that's why it needs to be more than one man deed.
Yeah, but I think to find the right individual, maybe Bill's right, maybe we need the committee to fuck the guy, or the person that's gonna do this, I don't know. Yes.
To come back from the issue of tree work or not, this is not a probably situation, this is a.
A certainty. Oh, no, it's a certainty.
And it's a question of when it gets here. And it's depending on insect growth, which is not linear, it's exponential. And the problem is that the more we kind of dance around the issue and not try to attack it with what we know, and Alan has gone to the seminar to learn what people have actually done, the longer we take to get there, doing things like the inventory and prioritization of trees and actually cutting them, the more likely we are to have a very high liability for tree removal costs. Because once the trees lose structural integrity, the cost triples kind of down. We should be moving at not contemplative kind of rates, but more like emergency rates. This is coming, and it's not, not a probability, it is a almost certainty. It's like snowballing, you, you know snow's gonna come. You can't get grants from some other town, or state or federal, to follow your snow, snow's coming. The Emerald Ash Borer is gonna be here, and if we don't anticipate it and act, that's gonna cost us.
Look, the first step is to get the tree warden, and we're only three weeks away from that, so.
Well, the tree warden is one thing, but the select board itself could actually take a little initiative right now without a tree warden. And that would be identify priority areas in town. And to me, and just what I've thought about, the priority areas are 121 East and West, Route 35 to the north, and Valley, and around the school. You think a dead tree on Hall Ranch Road, there's a couple cars out there, but it's not like a dead tree near the school, where people are going in and out of that school day after day, multiple people and vehicles. So I think identifying the high-risk areas, so that when we have somebody that's going to do inventory, they know this is the first place that gets inventory.
Well, I don't disagree, but I think it'd be really nice to have the tree warden from day one, who is gonna, because somebody's gonna have to administer the program. Whoever does the counting, somebody's gonna have to do this, and I think that's the responsibility of this particular individual, whoever he or she might be. And, and basically, we have one more select board meeting before election, and then it's, then it's appointment. So basically, I think it should be on the agenda right after that, and, and we appoint the tree warden, and we should get started with however the tree warden, the board wants to proceed.
We asked the supercoaster, can Alan be a tree warden and the other one?
Yes.
That is a stupid question.
We both thought at the same time.
But I mean, obviously, it's, but there's a lot more to this thing, because.
Well, there is.
Because not only do you have to find somebody who wants to be a tree warden, you can't expect the tree warden to be working 50 hours a week for nothing. It's not, it's, there's some, there's cost involved here, and then you have to figure out, okay, who's gonna take the trees down? They don't come down by themselves, so there's a cost, there's nothing in the budget to do this. So, I mean, this is a process that's gonna have to get involved. I mean, and I agree with Eric, it's, it's not maybe, it is coming, so we need to react to it, but Eric. But I mean, I, I, Alan, if you'd like to do it as a volunteer, that's fine, but I don't think that's something you want to spend hours a day doing.
Somebody's gonna have.
But you might have to pay the individual for it, you know, like anything else, I don't know. Yes.
But maybe just for the short term, in the few weeks until you figure out maybe a preliminary inventory like you were talking about, if you were willing to just start the ball rolling, so whoever comes in might be able to have some knowledge, but maybe that's more too much to ask, I mean, it's a lot to ask, what we're asking. But I mean, just, and, and then while you're going through the process of finding somebody who can do it.
But we're only, we're only talking about three weeks. Three weeks that we, we appoint, three weeks you have the new select board, who knows what's gonna happen?
I guess at this point, probably we should just wait until after town meeting.
I would, personally.
May you have people that don't want any trees come?
That's true, true, very true, too.
We can always amend the, we can always amend the budget at town meeting to include Emerald Ash Borer remediation.
Well, with that, Stan, you gotta have a number, you just can't, you just can't put a number, you gotta have a justification for it. I mean, we don't know if we have 4,000 ash trees or 2,000 ash trees. So, you know, that, the big difference, you know, I mean, to, I mean, Alan, maybe you, do you think you could count these trees between now and town meeting? I don't think so.
How did Londonary handle it?
Londonary did theirs as just a windshield cruise, and one guy did it, just drove around during deer season. Guilford has halfway through their town, they're a little bit more mileage than we are, but they have a conservation commission, and so they have volunteers, they're actually walking all the roads and pairs, and walking, so one person walks down one side road, one walks down the other side, and inventory says they go along. They've done half the town, I forget how many miles they said, but they're up to 3,700 trees. Counting, counting six-inch diameter and larger trees, and only counting trees that are not in the power line right away, because the remount power is responsible for those, and not counting the ones in their own state highway, because state highway will keep out the responsibility. But there's towns in the Midwest where this has been for 20 years that have gone bankrupt over the response to that.
Well, how would, how would, I mean.
So we need, we need to have, the brain trust is gonna be more than one person, that's my point, I think we're gonna need a committee, whether it's.
Oh, I agree. I mean, if you want to appoint the committee now, that's fine, but we should, you know, run it in the Grafton News, see if you want to volunteer, and certainly, we could certainly do that, it comes out on, right before town meetings.
I have some material that I picked up at the meeting, and Kim snuck out before I got to ask her, but you know, sometimes she's pretty fussy over what can be displayed in the, in the meeting room. But I'd like to put up, like, just a static display board with this information, just to get some people to look at it, and then try to drum up some interest in people that would be willing to help.
Yeah, that's a town issue, I don't think it's a public issue.
I, I, I can't.
I think it'd be all right, but I just want, it's her, it's her meeting, so I want to run by it.
We can talk, Chris, if you want.
So is it, is it okay, we've put an article in the Grafton News, looking for volunteers and serve on a.
That's a good start.
On a, what would you like to call this?
Emerald Ash Borer Committee, Ash Inventory Committee.
The deadline is this Friday. The deadline.
Yeah, I know, so we'll get it in, but I mean, what do you want to call it? You gotta, you gotta give it a name.
Yeah, we'll work it.
All right, and then tell Bill, Bill.
Emerald Ash Commission, or Committee.
Okay, Emerald Ash Committee. Okay, Emerald Ash Committee. How many peoples are looking for? Three, four, five? Well, too many, you get too many.
Yeah, but if you're going to be walking roads in pairs, maybe, you know, a chair and five members, or does that sound too unreliable?
How many?
Five members?
Five members.
Yeah. I mean, in reality, it could be.
Presume the chair tree warden will be.
But the emergency committee could have a component in this. They could be the ones that identify the areas that they figure are the most important, and where we would like to have the tree people go look at the trees, you know? It's going to be emergency people's problem when those trees start coming down, or somebody gets hurt.
Okay, but do we want a five-member committee that we're looking for?
Well, I would think it's starting while we get.
Well, the article should say, we're looking to the five members who want to serve on the committee. That's my point.
Putting a call out for a tree warden as well?
Yeah, we could do that, too.
Well, I mean, we already have a tree warden, I'm assuming.
Well, I don't know if the tree warden wants to serve with the expanded duties. That I don't know, we have to talk to him.
I would certainly do that first before you put on, looking for a tree warden.
No, I just think, let's put the committee first, that would be the first step.
Right.
And then we need to have a discussion with the tree warden prior to making our.
Maybe, can we bring him in the next meeting?
Sure, we could, we have the meeting on the third, no, what is it?
It's Monday.
Monday, we have the pre-town meeting.
Yeah, but then we have, so we do.
We have a meeting before the town meeting.
Yeah, we do.
The second.
Yeah, so we can bring him in on the second. Put him on the agenda, have him in here, okay?
Okay.
All righty, the list certificate, I'm not sure what this is all about, but.
You got it right in front of you there, the second page has to be signed.
Who signs it, we all do?
All of you, you'll see, there's five places on.
There are no suits, the attached certificate, no appeal or suit pending, verifies that there are no suits or appeal pending for the grand list value of 2019.
The listers are required to do this every February. And just go to the back of the grand list, and no one can come back about anything about this year once.
Do we need a motion for this or anything?
No.
We just sign it?
We do it in a formal setting, so it's part of the, thank you.
Bill, the town attorney discussion, do you want to do this in executive session, or do you want to do this now? I don't know how you want to handle this.
Executive.
Okay.
Well, you could, you could share a little bit of information that we contacted.
Well, if you want me to share.
Just the basics, then we'll make a decision.
Well, we did contact three attorneys, I think, and letters from three attorneys, correct?
Letters of three attorneys, Larry Slayson of San Martin Austin, Dan Richardson of Gillies, Tarrant, or Tarrant, Gillies, and Richardson out of Montpelier, and then Fisher, Fisher, Bob Fisher out of Brown. And they all would be willing to do it for, they understand that we don't have a very big budget, nor that we hope to use them very often, and that they have multiple, all the relationships with all the towns in the state of Vermont they work for. Well, most of the relationships, they're probably the attorney for some of the towns, many of them, they're probably full-time, but they do it on a call-in basis and try to get back to you right away. And two of them have a lesser fee for municipalities, the other one did not. But I don't want to talk about that except in executive session.
The reason we're doing this, of course, is because.
Oh, Rob, Robin is asking to be found somebody, because she, after 40 years, she's, she's otherwise almost all retired, and she wants to be retired from here, we're too bothersome.
Okay. I put gravel on here, because Danny's not here, but we had that discussion. Apparently, there's a home to sell.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
I know, that's why we're going to use all.
All right, yeah, so we, we, we're still investigating a potential gravel pit.
Yes.
Which we will discuss in. Other business? There was some other business, somebody said some other business, did they not?
Oh, just for those who don't know, one of our representatives, the Vermont State House, is in the process of resigning before the, well, before the November election, Matt Trever. So, the vacancy will need to be filled, it's done by gubernatorial appointments. Typically, the governor will appoint someone of the same party, he's a Democrat. So, the town committees of Wyndham III, which is our district, will be focusing on the fifth, two days after town meeting, and hopefully nominate a candidate for the governor to appoint to fill the legislative session, which legislative session goes through May typically, and then they're done for the year. And then the voters will get to choose in November on the ballot ahead of the next legislative session in January 2021. So, the Grafton will have something of a voice in the process in that we do have an organized town committee, and those members will be able to participate in the nominating process on the 5th of March.
Anybody want the whole tier?
Yeah, if anyone's interested in throwing their name in the hat.
Any other public comment, other business, I mean? Okay, public comment? We need a motion to go into executive session, but the next meeting of the select board will be on March 2nd.
We do have the pre-town meeting.
And we have the pre-town meeting on the 24th.